Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council for Tuesday, November 13th, 2012. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing Oh Canada. Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. I would move to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Counselor Rice?
I move adoption of the minutes of the city council meeting held October 29th.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries and a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any notes on the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. This brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. We did have notice of one delegation that had said that they were going to be here, who's not going to be able to attend tonight, and they've rescheduled. And I'm looking out into the audience and it doesn't look like we're having anybody else come.
The audience is a bit of an over.
It does. So yeah, it is a little sparsely populated there tonight. So we'll move on from the delegation portion into public hearings, of which we had none. And unfinished business, item 7.1, bylaw C-1280, a boring bylaw for local improvement levy. Is there someone from the administration that'd like to give us an introduction? Corporate Services Director, Mr. Anderson?
Mayor Given, this is a local improvement on 100th Street, the Cerberus Road, between 111th Street and 112th Street. So it's been completed and this is the completion of the boring bylaw.
Thanks very much, Mr. Anderson. Could I have a motion for second reading? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council give bylaw C-1280, a boring bylaw for local improvement, to the 100th Street East Services, second reading.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Discussion and debate on second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. There were no other items of unfinished business and no reports tonight, and we're straight on into committee business. And the Combative Sports Commission, Counselor O'Toole, I think you had that meeting for us?
Yes, I'd recommend...
Sorry, Counselor O'Toole, is your microphone there?
I'm good to go now. I'd like to recommend council receive the minutes for the Combative Sports Commission held on October 29th.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on those minutes? Did anyone note any errors or omissions?
Do we have questions after or before?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, certainly. Okay. So the motion to accept the minutes as presented, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And some questions on the minutes, perhaps? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Super. Just Counselor O'Toole, or whomever, I'm just interested in the last bullet on page two of the minutes. The Crystal Center is currently an exclusive ticketing agent. Every promoter has verbally indicated they have problems selling ticketing through the Crystal Center. Give me a bit of a context. What's the issue here?
Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, I can actually respond to that. There are a number of facilities that are in Grand Prairie that possible venues for combative sports. The Crystal Center has the... They're basically the people that are going to be the sole servers of tickets. And that is basically, one of the reasons are to make sure that the money that is generated from ticket sales is controlled and distributed at the end. So there's no, let's just say, riffraff and possible loss to any of the participants, the venue, or any of the competitors. And I think if Mr. Roth could go ahead with some more on that...
Mr. Roth, would you like to give some extra detail?
Your worship, the other issue that was discussed at the commission meeting is that it is pretty common in the combative sports world for competitors to actually sell tickets for their own events. And that's actually where a significant amount of the tickets are sold, is by the fighters themselves. And so that is one of the concerns that the promoters have expressed, as well as figuring out a system where the fighters could still do that and meet the requirements of our bylaw.
So just a follow-up. So this would define that if it was a city or county-owned building, then the Crystal Center would still be the ticketing agent?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. If there was some other venue chosen, then would that change?
There's options out there.
Yeah. So would the ticketing process change if a non-city or county-owned facility was used?
There's that possibility.
And my other follow-up was just this Mr. Mahood talked about a presentation to volunteers. Could you tell me what he would share? What's his expertise?
Mr. Mahood is a past combative sports athlete. He was a UFC fighter. He's got about 18 years as a competitor, as both amateur, professional, coach, official. He's just a talent that we would just love to have on board. And one of the goals that we were trying to seek from him is to offer our officials and the people that are ringside, some of the skills that he has, including just the official process when things go through. Example, when an athlete comes in, one of the first things they do is weigh in, a medical check, and make sure that the athlete is fit for competition. Once the athlete gets to competition era, stage, then there's the requirement for them to be wrapped. And that process is very time-consuming, and it's very technical how that's done. So this is where he is a master at this sort of thing, and he can pass on the information to some of the volunteers that we have on our board, and also some of the other people that we use in the venues. So it's working out great for us.
Okay. Thanks very much. Counselor Rice, you had a question?
Yeah, I guess it disturbs me if the rules are that if you have an event in a city-owned facility, then the Canada Games Arena, Crystal Center must be the exclusive ticketing thing. And if that is driving people to other venues, wouldn't it make more sense to change the rules rather than lose the business?
Counselor O'Toole?
If I can answer that, let me explain a couple of things here. The Crystal Center is a very large facility. It can hold approximately 4,000-plus people. A lot of the venues, a lot of the promoters want the big facility, but they don't have the money to pay for a big facility. So what we're finding is a group of promoters like to have the 1,800-person attendance, where they can go to a smaller facility. And that's beneficial to them. They don't have to pay out a lot. And the venue is usually a little bit more compact, and it's a little easier to access. There are promoters out there that want to go big or go home, and we've had a few of them come through the city, and it's just too much. I'm going to tell you, in my mind, I don't think the combative sports has really hit the citizens of Grand Prairie as hard as the promoters think. And I think a smaller venue is a lot easier to fill. And that would be an asset to the promoters if they can fill a smaller venue than a quarter of a larger one.
Okay, and that's fine. I guess my concern is, I'm not sure that who sells your tickets shouldn't be an option. You know, obviously, if we sell tickets, we have to protect ourselves if the event is canceled. But if we're not selling the tickets, we don't care. Well, we care, but not that much.
I just wonder, Counselor Rice and Counselor O'Toole, is it the case that the city holds some money which makes up the purse for the contestants? And so, since these are fights where there is a prize purse, the commission probably has an interest in ensuring that the contestants get their money at the end. And so there's got to be some portion of holdback. Is that a part of the... I wonder, Mr. Roth, is that a part of the equation here about why the city has a concern about where the money's held from tickets?
Yes, your worship. Certainly, the city does hold money, funds to pay fighters. The commission is also responsible for a certain number of fees related to an event, such as paying for a doctor, medical staff, and so on, and our officials. And part of the fees that is required, a promoter has to pay, is a minimum fee and a percentage of fees that are collected at the gate. For larger events, it becomes very difficult to get an accurate picture of the take at the gate, so to speak, the amount that's been brought in at the gate, unless it's run through an organization that the city has connection with. And that was the intent behind having the Crystal Center as exclusive ticketing agent.
Okay. Thanks. Counselor Rice?
No, I won't belabor it. It just seems to me that it could end up costing us business because our rules are so rigorous.
And that's one of the discussions that we're having.
Thank you.
We're trying to protect the citizens of Grand Prairie money-wise, and also we're trying to make it affordable for the promoters as well.
Counselor Radburn, anything further?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was hopeful that the Crystal Center would provide that little smaller venue or forum for these events. Is it proving to be an appropriate site for, I guess, a smaller card, so to speak, or a smaller event?
Do you mean the Bose Crystal Gardens, rather than the Canada Games Center?
It is definitely an asset to the facility, and it is up there for promoters to use. It's not that we're against it, but when they come to a town like Grand Prairie, they want to... The past experience has, they want to get the facility so they can get 4,000 people in there. And I think that in the future, you're going to see the possibility of Bose being used quite often.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Anything else that you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes? Now that everybody's grilled you?
No, we're just, we're going through a process of getting more people on board. So in the next month or so, we should have some new members coming on board.
That's great. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. 9.2, the Public Works Committee, Counselor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held October 30th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Counselor Rice?
Yeah, I wonder, on the last page, Counselor Monroe requested a summer progress report at the next Public Works Committee meeting to update committee on incomplete paving projects and to review how charges are levied. Was it not penalties are levied, not charges?
I see Counselor Monroe indicating it was, yes. So I think the intent was the penalties for projects that are incomplete or go past their sort of due date.
Yeah.
Thanks. Good catch. Any other notes on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the council award Bearstone Layers Ketchum Engineering and Services LTD, the engineering services contract for 100th Avenue upgrades 90th Street to 84th Street. Project for the amount of $162,020 excluding GST. As the highest qualified company to perform the work, and that the funding be allocated from the Roads 100th Avenue Upgrades Capital Program.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson, anything else to highlight in that set of minutes?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held October 30th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Counselor Rice?
Yeah, I wonder, on the last page, Counselor Monroe requested a summer progress report at the next Public Works Committee meeting to update committee on incomplete paving projects and to review how charges are levied. Was it not penalties are levied, not charges?
I see Counselor Monroe indicating it was, yes. So I think the intent was the penalties for projects that are incomplete or go past their sort of due date.
Yeah.
Thanks. Good catch. Any other notes on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the council award Bearstone Layers Ketchum Engineering and Services LTD, the engineering services contract for 100th Avenue upgrades 90th Street to 84th Street. Project for the amount of $162,020 excluding GST. As the highest qualified company to perform the work, and that the funding be allocated from the Roads 100th Avenue upgrades capital program.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson, anything else to highlight in that set of minutes?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, we had one other approval. We approved for our local mill in town here, Canfor. Had an application for a really tall, really big wind fence to contain all their dust and debris that they create in that business right in the middle of our city. So we approved that, and I'm not sure exactly when it'll be up, but it should show an improvement around that neighborhood for dust and debris flying around and keep everything contained to our local sawmill in town here. And that was all, Mayor Given.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. That'll take us to Community Development Committee, and I think Counselor Monroe, you're going to have to handle that set of minutes for us, eh?
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor Given. Figures that I have to cover for Counselor Crokin after the longest-running CDC meeting I think we've ever had, since I've been on council anyways. Anyways, I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting held October 30th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries.
Thank you. I'll move the city of Grand Prairie enter into negotiations for a five-year leasing agreement with the government of Alberta for occupancy of the Grand Prairie Young Offender Center building contingent upon the province funding all capital renovations, including but not limited to renovations to meet the current building codes. And further, that council approve the concept of the Grand Prairie Center for Youth Excellence model as amended for staffing. And just to speak briefly to this, the discussion that we had at the committee was that we were very clear that we really don't have the funds available to be doing any renovations to this building on our own. We're not prepared at this point to take on any capital expenditures. So we felt that it would be best to have the province step up to the plate ideally and take care of the funding of this facility. As far as the Grand Prairie Center for Youth Excellence model is concerned, we all agreed that the model itself looked good. There was a couple little tweakings that we had to do as far as the managing of the facility was concerned. But other than that, I think it went through without a problem.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Counselor, or sorry, discussion and debate, Counselor Rice?
I'd like to split the motion, please.
Okay, sure. So you'd like to split it to the first part about the negotiations, essentially?
And the building code, yes, and then the...
Yeah. Second about the model. Okay?
And I would just...
Sure. So we'll split the motion, and we'll deal with the first part first, then, if we can.
Okay.
So the motion's split.
Yeah.
And so we'll deal with the first part of the motion about entering into negotiations. Discussion and debate on that first portion of the motion? Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I definitely accept, or I would like to support this motion. I believe that a five-year lease is an appropriate amount of time, and I think it's really important that the community get access to a facility, a building which is just sitting empty. However, it can't cost the city any money because it just isn't fair. This is a provincial building, and it will be serving... It'll be housing services that go beyond what a municipality should be offering. So, you know, if we could get this building, it would be fantastic, but I would only support it if it doesn't cost the city any money.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Wong. Further discussion and debate on the first part of the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. So we'll move on to discussion and debate on the second part of the motion. Counselor Rice?
It's really a red-letter day. I seldom get to correct Counselor Monroe. But no, we didn't all agree that this was a wonderful idea. I would point that out quite strongly and quite clearly. And for that reason, I am moving that we table this. I think it's premature. We don't even know if we have a building, and we're already figuring out how many should manage it and what shifts they should work. So I'm moving this to be tabled until after our discussions with the province.
Okay. So Counselor Rice has a motion to table at the... I can't remember if that was similar to what happened at the council committee, the whole meeting, that followed on. I think essentially that was essentially what happened. Yeah. So, I mean, this motion came through to the council level, so that's in line with the council committee, the whole direction. So we'll take the motion to table in order. Any discussion or debate on the tabling motion? One last time, any discussion or debate on the motion to table?
Don't beg.
Well, so it will come back, though, pending the outcome of our discussions with the province. Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, I'm in. Thank you very much.
Mayor Given, I'm in support of what Counselor Rice has suggested.
Okay. Anything further? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Then moves on to 9.3.2, Counselor Monroe.
Thanks again, Mayor Given. I'll move that council approve the sponsorship of $10,000 for the 2013 Canadian Native Fastball Championships from the Recreation and Sport Operating Budget. Just to speak briefly to this, the city and the Sturgeon Lake Cree Nation were successful in the bid to host the 2013 Canadian Native Fastball Championships. This is going to take place August 2nd to 4th, which I believe is the August long weekend, out at the South Bear Creek Diamonds. We're expecting 80 teams and approximately 6,000 visitors to come to Grand Prairie for that. As far as funding is concerned, Kirsten assures us that the funding can come out of the Recreation and Sport Operating Budget, and this does not necessarily come out of, or does not affect any other line item.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. I think you have one more piece of business for Counselor Crokin.
You betcha. I'll move that, excuse me, I'll move the council approve minor revisions to policy 208, the Crystal Center box office, advance of ticket proceeds policy. We did review this policy, and it was just some minor word changes that ended up coming out. The policy itself speaks to the protection that the Crystal Center has when it comes to dealing with promoters, to make sure that they have enough funds available should something happen and the event is a no-go, that the city is not liable for refunding ticket monies to customers.
Okay. Discussion and debate on the motion? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll be supporting this motion. I think that staff did a look at what's happening in the industry elsewhere in our province and found that we were in line. And for me, what's important is the related information under this policy. It says the Crystal Center General Manager denies a request. The applicant may appeal the decision to the Community Development Committee. So I think there is an appeal process that I'm satisfied with. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Anything else you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes from the world's longest committee meeting, Counselor Monroe?
Yes, sure. Thanks, Mayor Given. We did have a couple of delegations that did attend. The Canadian Mental Health Association reported to our committee that they've entered into a lease agreement with the Chantel Group for the Fletcher Building, which is the building that we... on the corner of our parking lot. And they seemed quite excited about having the opportunity to relocate there. Let's see here. Sorry, I made another couple of quick notes here, and I'm just trying to quickly find them. Other than that, we just referred a couple of items to budget deliberations, such as the CKC sports field development. So there'll be more to come in that regard in next week, I guess.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Oh, Counselor Monroe, Environment Committee. Item 9.4.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move the council receive the minutes of the Environment Committee meeting held November 5th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move the council submit the assessment report responses to the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance. This is in regards to a report that was, that came before us, and a brief survey that just talks simply about, or the questionnaire part of me just talks briefly about a couple of points, such as, you know, is the water in Grand Prairie safe? Why or why not? Where is our municipal water source? And what we're doing to make sure that we can provide water services for the next 10 to 25 years. So the responses were included in the original minutes to that meeting. And a lot of this does fall back onto Aqua Terra, as they are our provider. But we felt comfortable that the city could certainly support sending off these responses, and we would encourage other councillors and the public at large to participate in the survey as well.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Anything else to highlight in that set of minutes, Counselor Monroe?
Certainly, Mayor Given. We had, once again, a couple of delegations at this meeting as well, too. The one in particular that I wanted to talk about was, we had Michelle Savard, who is the new chief operating officer at Aqua Terra, come and give us a brief update as far as recycling is concerned. Looks like we're seeing about a 20% increase over the past year on our recycling efforts. And that's about 16,000 tons collected at the landfill so far. As well, it looks like the schools will be taking part in the recycling here. I believe it's December 1st that they start. No. Okay, somewhere around there. And then, as well, the apartments and condos online, right, as well, too. We also had a brief update in regards to our Snow Angel program. And that's the program where, pardon me, members, citizens can recognize volunteers who have, without being asked, helped them around their yard, whether it's shoveling their driveway or what have you. The city will provide them with a $5 gift card. And we've had 48 submissions so far. So it sounds like it's a program that's doing quite well. And that's all I have for right now.
Excellent. Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. If there's nothing else... Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. If there's nothing else for Counselor Monroe, then we move on to the council committee, the whole, from November 6th. I'll look for a motion for that set of minutes. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the council committee, the whole meeting, held November 6th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Wong, would you care to handle the motion coming out of that set of minutes?
Sure. I move that council direct Mayor Given to send a letter to the Minister of Infrastructure regarding capital renovations to the Grand Prairie Young Offender Centre. And speaking to this, I'll just give some background. Our staff, when they were working on their model for the Youth Centre for Excellence, spoke to provincial staff, and they said that there was no money in the budget, in their budget, to handle the renovations. So this motion basically addresses that on a political level. We actually have not made a formal request to the province to put this money into their budget deliberations, so this letter from Mayor Given will basically be that formal request.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I would maybe just add that certainly I'll follow up with the minister personally to see if we can further the discussion a little bit, rather than just leaving it to a letter, but at least we'll make the starting step there. If there's no further discussion or debate, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and that would bring us to item nine point six, General Government Services Committee, Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given.
I move council receive the minutes of the General Government Services Committee meeting held November 6th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you. I would move council give first reading to bylaw C-1264, Temporary Borrowing Bylaw. This is a, this will be for 2013. This is a annual bylaw that provides $2 million line of credit that was established back in 1998 in order to meet temporary cash deficiencies due to investing activities. This line of credit requires annual renewal, so this is the annual renewal for 2013. Just a quick note, the line of credit was accessed for five days in total in 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Sorry, excuse me, that's first reading, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you. I move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1264, Temporary Borrowing Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Sorry. So, any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council have third reading to bylaw C-1264 at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So a motion to have third reading here tonight as this motion needs to pass unanimously in order for us to have third reading here tonight. If it doesn't pass unanimously, then it would come back at a following council meeting. Discussion and debate? Seeing none? Thank you. And that motion carries, so we can have third reading. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you. So I'll make, I move council give third reading to bylaw C-1264, Temporary Borrowing Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on third reading of the Temporary Borrowing Bylaw? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Counselor Radburn, anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. A couple of other agenda items. We did refer a kind of shortfall in the Centre 2000 budget to our budget review session, and we did receive an upgrade on our innovation project, called it a progress report, looking that, internally looking at developing a recognition program and how to document, I guess, behaviors, work that shows initiative. And externally, we're looking at reviving, by we, the city, is looking at reviving innovation awards with the CRI, and possibly looking at an innovation conference. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. I see maybe a question for Counselor Radburn. Counselor Rice?
I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend this meeting. When I saw the proposed innovation conference, it had been the subject of much discussion at the 100th anniversary committee meeting, that that one, we wanted to have an innovation conference as part of the cornerstone. So I hope that's what we're talking about, the same conference, not a, you know.
It was. Actually, they cited 2014.
Thank you.
Good.
Hopefully, if we had it in one year, all the stuff would be innovative the next year again, so we can do the same thing. If there's nothing else on that set of minutes, then we'll move on to correspondence, which we had none. We had no delegations here tonight, and there were no notices of motion. So we moved to council member, of course, I'm sorry, council, I didn't get the lineup from council members before we started. I see Counselor O'Toole has a couple, and so we'll start with Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I've got some great news regarding the library. We have a new library director starting January 2nd. Her name is Maureen Currie. Her family has roots here. They were the initial owners of Currie's Jewelers back in the 70s. So she will be looking forward to coming to Grand Prairie. She's already talked to the real estate agents about purchasing a home. And as for the second Philip J. Currie Dinosaur Museum, I can talk on that a little bit. The Philip J. Currie was just given the highest honor by the Canadian Geographic Society, and that's pretty remarkable for this gentleman. He's been known throughout the entire world, and to get bestowed upon him the bronze medal, I think it is, and that's just a great honor, and I know he speaks very highly of that. The other interesting news story lately is the IMAX has expressed interest in opening up their newest technology, IMAX theater in and locating beside the museum in Wembley when it gets built. And they're hoping to start construction this year.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I just wanted to give an update on the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance. As Counselor Monroe already told you, we're inviting all members of the public to participate in a short survey about their watershed, and the link is on our website to the online survey. Our website is www.mightypeacewatershedalliance.org. It's very long, but it's pretty straightforward. A watershed area is simply the area of land that drains into a body of water. For us, the Peace River is the most significant part of the watershed area that we live in, even though we draw our water from the Wapiti. The connection is the Wapiti drains into the Smokey, Smokey drains into the Peace River. There are a lot of other rivers that are called tributaries to the Peace River. I'm just going to name a few. It's the Smokey River, Little Smokey, the Nautiquan, and the Wabaska, but there are many, many other ones. It is a large river, and our watershed area covers about one-third of the province. Don't, so when you're filling out the survey, don't worry if you don't know too much about what the water is like in your area. Part of the questions in the survey are to determine what you understand about your watershed area, including the quality and quantity of the water that's being drawn from there. We're also going around and doing a bunch of open houses and trying to scope out a bunch of these issues, too. This is the fourth project that we are completing on behalf of the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance. This should lead to what's called a State of the Watershed Report, and that will give us basically a snapshot in time of what the water is being allocated for and whether or not it's considered a healthy river. We did receive a few reports already. One of the most interesting facts is, when you look at the Wapiti River, Alberta Environment and Sustainable Resource Development tells us that during the low-flow periods that our Wapiti River is 100% allocated, which means that this next 25-year water allocation license that Aqua Terra is seeking will probably be the last one that comes out of that river. So we're going to have to start searching for another long-term water source, and that's usually where we start getting more people coming out. Whenever there's water concerns, up in the north near Fort Vermillion, we had a huge turnout to the open house there because they do have some issues withdrawing water out of there because they're a bunch of small communities that can't afford to do it on their own, so they have to pool resources. In any case, the Peace River itself is 0.6% allocated for its resources and 0.3% actually drawn from, so there's still massive capacity there. And that's something that we should consider going forward, although the Smokey itself is also a good source because it, there's still lots of capacity there. And you are allowed to do what's called inter-basin transfers, and we are all in the same basin, which means that you're allowed to circulate that water. As long as it ends up in the same place, you're fine with that.
Looks like we have maybe a question for you, Counselor Wong. Counselor Rice?
In the past, there's been some very brief little feelings out, or whatever you call of, people from the southern, the south, that want to access to our water. Is this part of your committee's mandate to say, you know, hands off?
We will be making some recommendations to those regards, but as of today, what's in the Water Act forbids any kind of transfers from one basin to another.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Were there any further committee reports? Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, I have a downtown association report. We had a meeting here. Just a reminder to everybody, Vegas Night is Friday till 11 o'clock. We have extended transit until 11:30 that night, and the stuff, the bus will be in front of Bama furniture as well. And also the Santa Claus Parade, December 2nd, starting at 1:00, 1:00 PM. Get ready for the Christmas season to come hard and heavy on us. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Were there any further committee reports? Boards and commissions? Seeing none, then Counselor Rice, maybe we'll start roundtable with you, and we'll go back around to Counselor Gustafson.
So, okay. I attended the Travel Alberta Open House on October 31st. It was very, very interesting, as the Travel Alberta provincial leaders were here to, they wanted to talk about how they could help enhance Grand Prairie's tourism potential. So it was a very good meeting, had lots of people there, and I think, I think they were very impressed with what Grand Prairie had to offer. I attended the Prairie Wood Design Awards. It was absolutely fascinating evening. The major sponsor was Canfor as well. Warehouser was a sponsor. And these awards were designed to, to pay tribute to the various buildings built with wood in western Canada, and they included interiors, commercial and institutional, municipal and recreational. They also had an award for the engineering advocate, and it went to the person who had a big commitment to pushing the perceived limits of building with wood. And it was a really, really fascinating evening, and I think you have to be proud of our industries that are wood producers from this area. We're big wood producers. Minister Drysdale was there, as well as Everett Macdonald, our MLA, so it was a great evening. I attended the Chamber of Commerce Business Before Nine Chamber Morning Mixer. I bet you're impressed at that, at Victoria's Attic, and again, it was just packed. I guess a lot of people like to get up early in the morning, so kudos to the chamber, because I think these meet and mingles, as they call them, are extremely beneficial to the business community.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was able to attend the United Way luncheon kickoff at the Southside Fire Hall. Some chili and dessert was very good over there, thanks to the United Way for all the hard work they do in and around the community. I'd really like to take a moment and thank and commend our Mr. David Ollinger. He worked very hard on a citizen engagement program, and I believe it was a very, very wonderful evening, and I'm sure the city and all the administration learnt a lot, and I'd really just like to thank and thank him for his hard work and his crew that really, really stepped up to the plate here, I believe. November 9th, Random Act of Kindness Day. I'd just like to remind you all that it doesn't have to be Random Act of Kindness Day to do an act of kindness, so be kind. Council, council of the committee meeting as a whole, and yes, Helen Rice alluded to, I was able to host a morning mixer in Grand Prairie here, and I'd like to thank the chamber for all the hard work they do in and around our region. And of course, I'd like to thank Victoria's Attic for hosting, helping host that morning. And I attended the Western Truck Wagon Association Awards evening this past Saturday at the Five Mile Hall, so congratulations to all the hard work that those cowboys put into putting on a show all over northern Alberta and BC. And of course, I'd really like to encourage everybody to go to Vegas Night this Friday. Be there. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I also attended the Chili Luncheon fundraiser for the United Way. On Saturday, November 3rd, I attended the Virtual Y fundraiser at Ovation's Dinner Theater, and that's a youth program for the YMCA. I attended a open house in Valley View for the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance. And one thing I forgot to mention when people are filling out the surveys, anyone who also gets their water from either a well, a dugout, or an aquifer can also, can also fill out that survey, because we're interested in hearing from them. On Wednesday, November 7th, I was at the Wapiti Nordic Ski Lodge and made a presentation to the ski club there on the Wapiti Corridor Plan. And finally, on Sunday, November 11th, I attended the Remembrance Day Event at the Legion, or hosted by the Legion at the Canada Games Arena. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. October 31st, I also attended the City United Way Chili Lunch, and after that, I went straight to a meeting with, our quarterly meeting, my quarterly meeting with City Manager Greg. November 1st, Family Violence Prevention Month Proclamation. On November 5th, I also attended the Activate Grand Prairie Citizen Engagement Framework Lunch. Just recognize, Alex, thanks for recognizing David. Chelsea was also a teammate of David's with that project. And of note, I just thought it was really cool that at our table, there was a young lady who had, this was November 5th, she came to this launch, and she arrived in Grand Prairie November 1st, so within the first week of her being here. So it speaks a lot to her, herself, to take it upon herself to come and join the conversation. And secondly, she was very positive already about our fair city, so that was a really positive part of that evening for me. November 6th, I joined Mayor Given and Alberta Health Services Representative in terms of having a lunch with a prospective specialist doctor that may be coming to Grand Prairie. On November 7th, I want to thank the Town of Beaver Lodge for hosting the inter-municipal meeting at their Beaver Lodge new complex, so thank you for the invite, and I think it was a useful session for us to get together, talk about regional, regional activities. And November 11th, I attended the Army-Navy Veterans Remembrance Day ceremonies at the Centotaph. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. On Wednesday, the 31st, I attended the Chili Cookoff on the United Way at the Fire Hall, as well as some of the councillors already mentioned. On the 1st of November, I attended the Philip J. Currie Meeting, and then I also went right away to a Ducks Unlimited fundraiser. On the Saturday, the 3rd, I attended the YMCA fundraiser for the, it was an Ovation's Dinner Theater. Incredible, good time. I'd like to thank Helen Rice for encouraging me to go and supplying with me with a couple of tickets that she was unable to go to for reasons of, doesn't matter.
That's right, you got them.
I got them. On the, on the 5th, I really want to speak highly of the citizens' engagement. It was really well organized. Usually council usually sits together with each other, and we talk about things, but we were actually sitting at different tables and got to listen to what the people, what they really wanted to see in the community, and how the community can benefit from. they really wanted to see in the community, and how the community can benefit from their thoughts, or, and provide some ideas, and what they really like about the community, which was the part that I really enjoyed listening to. And so hats off to your department, David, sincere. On the, let's see, on the 7th, yes, we attended the inter-municipal meeting in Beaver Lodge, well-attended by the local communities, great discussion, and, and I, I was the carpool driver for my vehicle and my guests. On the 8th, I attended the Blast Away Mixer held at Victoria's Attic, and I brought my wife, because she said, "You're not going there alone, you're going to take me with you." So all I can say is, I'll probably end up spending a lot of money at that store at Christmas time, so...
Alex thinks that's good.
Yeah, Alex thinks that's good, and it was interesting. On the Friday, the, the 9th, the Holy Cross held a Remembrance Day ceremony, and there was a great number of children opted in to attending, and Mayor Given and I were in attendance, and it was about two hours of really neat stories, school, choirs singing, and some interesting speeches, and I was honored to be there. And on the 11th, my family and I attended the Remembrance Day at the Senatath held by the Anavets, and that was my week, or two. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thanks, councillor O'Toole. Councillor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just one event that I was able to attend in the last couple of weeks, and that was the Anavets, Anavets Remembrance Day ceremony at the Senatath, and I must say that it was very well attended, as per usual, and it was, it was a very nice ceremony.
Excellent. Thanks very much, councillor Monroe. So I'll be brief. I also attended, on October 31st, I also attended the Travel Alberta meeting that councillor Rice previously mentioned. On November 1st, in the morning, I had an opportunity to do a little visit by the Rock 97.7 morning show, and did a little bit of an interview to promote the Activate GP launch that would happen later that week. And later that day, I attended at the City on 99th Building to join with Reeve Boprey in proclaiming the start of Family Violence Prevention Week. As councillor Radburn mentioned, had an opportunity to participate in some doctor recruitment. The doctor that Alberta Health Services is looking at recruiting is a pathologist, so a specialty that could be very helpful, obviously, to the, the region, and the doctor had younger family, and so councillor Radburn and I were able to extol the virtues of all the things that were available for young families here, and look at some of the options for his spouse, and so it was, I think, a useful meeting, and certainly one that I appreciated being invited to by Alberta Health Services. On November 8th, I had an opportunity with the city manager to get together with representatives from Acco Electric for a brief update, and opportunity to discuss some issues of mutual concern. And on November 9th, as councillor O'Toole mentioned, I was also at Holy Cross School for their Remembrance Day celebrations. I really wanted to spend, lend, excuse me, extend a special thank you to teacher Pat Duffy, I believe. Mr. Duffy has been the spearheading the Remembrance Day events at Holy Cross for his schools for a long time. As I understand it, this is his last year teaching, and so a special moment for him, I think, but it really showed that the passion of one teacher can drive what happens for a lot of our students, so congratulations to Mr. Duffy. And I believe, I believe that, oh, and then, of course, I, as has been mentioned, I was at a Remembrance Day ceremony this Sunday at, at the Crystal Centre, attended on behalf of the City of the Legion's Remembrance Day ceremony. It was great to see all the participants there, and I really appreciate the fact, actually, that we have an outdoor ceremony at the Senatath and an indoor ceremony at the Crystal Centre. You know, I think there's always some question of whether we should have one big one, and I think that having a range of options is really good for the community. I know that there's a lot of seniors and a lot of families who wouldn't be able to attend the outdoor ceremony, but I know that there's a lot of people who also appreciate sort of the traditional feeling of spending a little bit of out time outdoors on Remembrance Day, and sort of thinking about the sacrifices that people made. So I want to thank both the Anavets and the Legion for their efforts in, in helping us carry on our Remembrance Day traditions in Grand Prairie. And other than that, I believe, I think we've covered everything, so unless there was anything else, we'll adjourn our council meeting. Thanks very much.